Good evening, I'd like to call to order the council meeting of January 23rd. If the clerk could read the roll, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum, Councilmember Spitzley is absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Do we have, and Councilmember Spatafor?
I'm sure others were going to mention this too, but I would ask that, as in our moment of meditation, we keep the victims of the violent mass shooting in Monterey Park in our thoughts this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I ask that folks remember Doug Miller tonight. He, I'm not sure if folks at the dais are aware, but Doug did pass on January 11th. Doug was a Lansing Eastern graduate, he was a longtime employee at General Motors, but he was also a staunch South Lansing advocate, and, I mean, just in a really pugnacious way represented the Daph Street area, and was actually head of the neighborhood watch in that area, so that I would ask that folks remember his wife of 40, 40 years, Judith Miller, as well as his sons Doug and Don, and his many grandchildren, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be recognized? Seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have heard your approval of the council proceedings of January 9th.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I would move the minutes of the Lansing City Council meeting for January 9th as written.
Have a motion, are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, just a minor concern, and I would make a motion to let the remarks by council section reflect my objection that I made on the 9th to my single committee assignment, and that I requested an additional assignment. I just want that to reflect that in the minutes.
City Clerk.
Let me, do you want me to bring them back next time?
Yes, let's bring them back.
Okay.
Councilmember Jackson, normally with the way this is done, if you have specific comments, you enter those in writing, and then they're permitted, then they're entered into the record. So, if you could work with a clerk on that, we will bring these back. So if you would pull your motion, Vice President Garza.
Okay, I pull the motion.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember Comments. Start off with Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, just want to announce our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting is coming up this Saturday, the fourth Saturday of every month, at Gregory's, which is on 2510 North Martin Luther King. I'll be there, 10 o'clock, and we can talk about anything Fourth Ward or City of Lansing related, in a nice, laid-back setting, very informal, so come in your sweats or your pajamas, it's okay, because I'll probably be in mine, and I look forward to seeing you there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, just a few announcements, the first is that rejuvenating South Lansing has not met, really since the pandemic began, way back in 2020. That group is set to meet for the first time since the beginning of the pandemic, on January 24th at 6:30 PM, and that's at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, located at 5825 Wise Road. If you don't know anything about rejuvenating South Lansing, they really are kind of an umbrella group, and kind of a resource group to the myriad individuals, stakeholders, neighborhood associations, et cetera, throughout South Lansing, and they do a ton to advocate for South Lansing, to create community connections and the like, and so we certainly hope that you all can come out, again, 5825 Wise Road, and the Sandy Allen Room. Also, there is what I believe to be a very, very important community conversation that will take place on January 31st, and this is a conversation that will include the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, the property owners, and the management company of the Logan Square on South MLK, as well as citizens and stakeholders throughout South Lansing. As you know, we have, the last couple of years, worked diligently to move that South MLK corridor forward, we have created, established essentially a corridor improvement authority, we have intentionally got out and talked to business owners along that corridor, with regard to, as an example, and I should say among others, the facade improvement program that we have here in the city of Lansing, we've identified a number of properties along that corridor, such as the Maple Grove School, such as Metro Bowl, that are serving as major detriments to the forward movement of that corridor, but there is no location or property that is more detrimental than the Logan Square. It is some 30-plus commercial acres of real estate, and it is literally rotting down the vine. And so what we are going, we're finally at a place where the property owners, the management company, along with some, you know, representatives from the city, we're finally at a place where folks are ready to sit down and talk. What is the future of the Logan Square? And frankly, it's a conversation that has long passed due. So we hope that you make it out to that, that is January 31st, this is a Tuesday, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and this meeting will take place in the Logan Square Suites 13 and 14. So if you've ever been to the subway, that is in Logan Square, these two suites are adjacent to the subway, so we hope you come out for that. And then lastly, I want to thank folks that participated in the participatory budget meeting, as well as my Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting, that was January 14th, at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, we had a, it was a packed room, we had north of 50 people attend. I thought the administration did a great job with regards to the budget piece, I think they got quite a bit of input that they can consider as they move forward and they draft their recommended budget for this body to consider. And then as part of our constituent contact meeting, we had Senator Anthony, as well as Representative Carol Hope, in to give us legislative updates, and then we were able to talk about South Lansing issues, and then other issues that are before City Council, and we had just, I thought, a fantastic conversation. So for folks that were on hand, we appreciate you, and we will meet again, the second Saturday of every month, so our next meeting is February 11th, we will meet at 10 o'clock, 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, and at that meeting we will have our new treasurer, Alan Fox, as well as the executive director of our land bank, who is Roxanne Case, and in addition to that, of course, we'll discuss South Lansing issues, and broader issues that are impacting our city and region. So if you want to participate in that, you do not have to be a Third Ward resident, I certainly encourage you to get out and take part in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I am going to be starting back up the First Ward Constituent Meeting, that is going to happen February 4th, same place that it used to be, the Rio Town Depot, 1203 South Washington Avenue, from 10 to noon, Representative Devendorf will be there, and there will be coffee and doughnuts, and a chance to have a conversation back and forth about what we'd like to see in our ward. Also, there is going to be the ENO Monthly Meeting, February 1st, 7:00 PM at the Foster Center, that's room 210 on the second floor, and there is going to be a presentation on the traffic, and the issues with it around the Patengale School, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? The only comment that I would have is I would want the audience that's here tonight, as well as those that are listening, at our February 13th Committee of a Whole Meeting, we will be having the Lansing Housing Commission in, they will be addressing their audit for the last two years, and so Mr. Fleming will be here for that presentation. With that, I will turn it back over to the clerk.
Thank you, and the only announcement I have tonight is that the LPD is asking to share that if you have a white Cadillac parked on the street, your headlights might be on, if you happen to be here. And with that, we are to community event announcements, we give you up to one minute to tell us the time and place and purpose of your event, please proceed to the mic if you have any community events, and seeing no one coming forward.
We do have someone, thank you.
Good evening. So I wanted to share that on this upcoming Saturday, January 28th, at the Reach Out Christian Center, located off of Wise Road, there's going to be an apology that's being offered by an all-white clergy, and that make up not just Presbyterian Church, but also other denominations, and they'll be offering an apology to the black community for the legacy of slavery, and so this has never been done before, and so we're trying something new in regards to building partnerships, but also to acknowledge the aftermath of slavery and the remnants of it. There are several pastors from the black community, as well as a handful of white clergy that have all decided to take this plunge and offer the apology. So I extend the invite to, of course, the council and everyone in the room. That apology will be followed by a presentation by the Justice League. The Justice League of Greater Lansing, Michigan is a nonprofit that's growing, and the vision of the Justice League is to help the 27,000 African-Americans in the city of Lansing to gain reparations. And so we will be talking about a reparations model, and what that would look like as being led by faith-based institutions. So it's a pretty powerful movement, and I extend that invite for the council and for the city to join. So again, that's January 28th, 2:00 PM, at Christian Reach Out Center, the pastor of that church, name is Pastor David Foreman, and I don't think excitement is the right word, but we're very moved by the collaboration that we've had on this front, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there other community events? All right, seeing none, let me go back for one second, I did neglect to announce that we have a new council intern in my office, whose first day is today, so please join me in welcoming Griffin Lee to, he's standing in the back there, he'll be assisting folks to get signed in to speak, and other administrative stuff for the council meetings, so welcome Griffin. And with that, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes items 2 through 7 on the agenda, and that is the blue sheet, so if you wish to address items 2 through 7 on the agenda, please make sure you fill in a blue sheet in the next minute or so with Griffin in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shaw.
Thank you, Council President. Just so you all know, I had an exposure, I am negative, but wearing the mask just to make sure. I had a few announcements, I'll hopefully be brief. One, I wanted to let everyone know how exciting it is, I went to the US Conference of Mayors, and we won two grants while there, we won $175,000 in the Childhood Obesity and Sustainability Grant, for a program that we're working with the schools on, and where kids are going to be growing food outside of our schools, in some of the gardens that are set up, and we're going to use the dollars to recreate the gardens that have kind of wilted over the pandemic, so that's good news. And then $10,000 grant to help with training and tutoring for returning citizens from prison who are coming back, which will reduce recidivism and help them reintegrate. So that's good news. More good news, Ellison Brewery opened on the, in Rio Town, on the South Side, I have not yet been able to make it there, but I've heard it was excellent, and Lansing Shuffle will be opening, they have a soft opening, and then I believe they've got their big bash coming, I think it's this Thursday night, to open up, so that's good news also, as we're seeing redevelopment. I was going to mention the South Lansing meeting at Logan Square, but Councilman Hussein covered that, thank you. Councilman, again, January 31st, 6 to 7:30 PM, over by Subway, and then a few items from our Neighborhoods Department, our next Neighborhood Roundtable, those will be starting up again, is January 26th at 10:00 AM at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. Brett Koschinsky from Parks and Rec is going to talk about our parks, and while you're there, check out the new Ninja Park that we're building right outside the Schmidt Center, which is going to be awesome, first one in the city, right outside of the Schmidt Center. Our final participatory budget discussion is February 9th at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center, from 12 to 1, and then our Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement Department is hosting a family movie night at the South Washington Office Complex on Washington, on the South Side, in the large drill hall. I don't think they've chosen what the movie is yet, but this is in lieu of our annual snow tubing event, which certainly is not going to happen, as there's really no snow. And then finally, the Neighborhood Advisory Board grant applications are available online, so I hope people will apply, they are open until early March, and then if anyone has any interest in serving in our Neighborhood Advisory Board, we have two vacancies, so please go online and fill out the application or email my office. Oh, and additionally, the Lansing Juneteenth Celebration Committee is hosting a Jazz Brunch on February 11th, from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM at Gregory's on North MLK, so I believe tickets are $30, can be purchased from any committee member. So that's it, appreciate your time.
Mayor Shaw, could you address the CART Auto Pay situation? I know we saw something on, some of us saw something on Facebook, but I don't believe that there was necessarily a press release on it.
Public Service has been handling that, there was a computer error, and everybody who'd use Auto Pay was charged an additional fee, so it was caught by some citizens, they reported it to Public Service, who put out on social media, we didn't have to do a press release because the media caught it, we're looking to see if we can email all of the Auto Pay folks, because, I mean, I got charged and didn't realize, it just, it was a glitch in the computers, and everyone got charged this fee. So anybody who contacts our CART or emails them, it will be automatically waived, so anybody watching, please do that, and then again, we're looking to see if we can get an email out to the email list, and the media's already been reporting on it, so I don't, I don't know if Public Service did a press release or not, but I know they've been pushing that out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on agenda items, and again, that includes items 2 through 7, and our first speaker is Jody Washington, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you so much, Jody Washington, Lansing, Michigan. I just wanted to say to the council, thank you so much for the resolution on right to work. Union labor is so incredibly important, and if it weren't for unions, we wouldn't have the working rights that we have, we would certainly not have wages that we have. Some of us fought the right to work legislation extremely hard when it passed, so thank you for, Ryan, for putting the resolution together, thank you for everybody that asked to sign on to their resolution, and thank you for voting it through. I think it's incredibly important that the legislative body of the state of Michigan understands that the legislative body of Lansing supports union. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you. My name is Nicholas Zandi, I'm from the Second Ward, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number 6, which is the right to collective bargaining for unions. As someone whose mother is a union worker, and someone who is a social Democrat, I believe that this is a good policy, after years of Snyder-era right-to-work policies, and economic globalization, thanks to NAFTA and the USMCA, and I'm cautiously optimistic that the city council will support this idea. The reason I'm saying this with caution is I know that one of the councilmembers apparently, allegedly owes money to their ex-employees, and I'm unsure if they've ever compensated them. Now, I'm all in favor of one's redemption, and I hope that they vote yes on this resolution because of this, and that all the city council considers the working class and votes yes on this belated resolution to allow unions to have collective bargaining. That is all I really need to say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the consent agenda with one resolution for nonprofit recognition for Capital Area Blue Society.
We have a motion for the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have item 3, the appointment of Prince Gerald Solis to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so we had our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting last week, and I'm proud to say that I am definitely supportive of Prince Solis for the Second Ward, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, a member of the advisory board. You know, something, not only did he have an impressive resume, but I mean, something that really struck me is that how he wants to make sure that every marginalized group in the community has a voice, and that some obviously don't have the people out there representing them, and that he was, look at every one of the marginalized groups and make sure that they are spoken for. So really appreciate that, honored to have you serve, and I appreciate your willingness to serve.
So we have motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously, and sir, if you can come down to the, well, we will get you sworn in. Have you followed the instructions of the clerk?
Maybe you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have item 4, the appointment of Hugh McNichol to the Board of Public Service.
Councilmember Spatafor.
First, I'd move the resolution appointing Hugh McNichol as the Second Ward Member of the Board of Public Service, for a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Okay, we have a motion, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing, yes.
Just wanted to make a real quick introduction to someone who's no stranger to the members of the city council, has a long history of public service here, since he moved here in 1983, including 26 years with the Michigan Department of Transportation, so we're very excited that Hugh McNichol has agreed to serve on this board, and the committee vetted him this afternoon and recommend his appointment, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously, and Hugh, if you could come down this time, and we will get you sworn in.
You guys see how it's done?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Board of Public Service Member.
Of the office of Board of Public Service Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next, we have the appointment of Melissa Horst to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, thank you, I'd move the appointment and the resolution of Melissa Horst as an at-large member for the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board, with a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
We have a motion before us, Councilmember Spatafor.
Sure, again, Melissa Horst is also not a stranger to service in our community, she's a long history of serving the state and the country, working a long time for Senator Carl Levin, as well as many organization stakeholders in our community, also worked for a younger representative, Andy Shore, for a brief period of time, and has come home to the East Side and wants to serve our community, so I would like the committee to recommend her appointment.
All right, we have a motion before us, are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Hussein.
I just want to acknowledge a couple things, Councilmember Cost asked, I thought, what was a really good question in committee about time, and commitment, and the importance of these respective boards and commissions, and as it pertains to Melissa's appointment, specifically, you know, the fact that this HRCS Advisory Board is so critically important in the city of Lansing and what we do, and that they have quite the charge, and that Chair Ronald Embry would like to start actually engaging in subcommittee work, so that they can really get after the charge of the committee and make sure they're doing justice, right, essentially to the city, and for folks that use that department for various reasons. And so I really appreciate that that question has been asked. We have historically had issues, right, populating these boards, and then when these boards and commissions are populated, sometimes we struggle to achieve and maintain quorum, and so I think that's going to start to be a question of every applicant, but with that being said, we really appreciate the folks that are before us tonight, everyone was asked that question, and the commitment to these respective boards, commissions, and the work that they do was very evident, and so we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. And Melissa, if you could come on down, we'll get you sworn in. Third's a charm, so you should have this down pat now.
No, I'm actually just wondering if you can reach the mic. I know, I need like a box or something. Thank you.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Member.
Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, we are to Agenda Item 6, the bespoke support of collective bargaining.
And with that, I would turn to Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I just want to start by saying, as someone that's a dues-paying union member, I appreciated the outpouring of support on this council for this resolution when it was written, so I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and it starts, "Whereas Michigan has strong roots in the labor movement dating back over 100 years, the unions are essential in protecting the workers from unfair labor practices and abuse from the employers, and the employees deserve a strong voice at the table for better working conditions and a safety net, and whereas Lansing City Council supports the right of all citizens to join a workers' union and believes the unions built the middle class in Lansing, which is critical to the health of Lansing, and whereas the state of Michigan, under Act 248 of 2012, repealed workers' rights to collectively bargain in the state of Michigan, the so-called Right to Work Bill, and whereas a contract negotiated in good faith can be edited or undone without consent from the workers or unions, and has caused the average worker's pay in Michigan to fall below non-right-to-work state neighbors by a wide margin, now therefore be resolved that the Lansing City Council supports the efforts of other, excuse me, of other elected officials in the state of Michigan to announce their support, announce and support the unions and freedoms of all individuals to be able to collectively bargain in good faith, be it further resolved that the Lansing City Council is dedicated to the health and well-being of all residents, and strongly urges the state legislature to pass HB 4004 and HB 4005, or SB 0005 and SB 0006 of 2023 in the state of Michigan. It further be resolved that the Lansing City Council encourages the administration to review its policies on relationships with our public union employees, and the clerk transmit a copy of the resolution to the state legislature and the governor's office upon a. upon adoption by city council."
Thank you. Are there, you're moving the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for the resolution. Are there any other comments on this? Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, I want to, I want to thank Councilman Cost. A number of us jumped on this and were, I guess, co-sponsors, but as soon as this legislative session started, Ryan actually jumped all over this. He actually wrote this, and then put this before law, so that law could vet it, and then put, put it before this body. I think it's critically important. There are a lot of times when people come to us and they, and they talk about issues, you know, they might be kitchen table, dining room table issues, and unfortunately, the opportunity or the ability to impact change with regards to those level, or those issues are at levels beyond city council. There might be a county issue, a state issue, a federal issue, and so, sometimes, you know, we essentially direct them, and then there are others where we actually leverage our collective voice to try to influence. And so, I think that's what this is, and I really appreciate it. As a car-carrying union member, and as somebody, this, this law actually went into effect in 2013, and I have felt, my, my union brothers and sisters have felt the impact of this, as we have continued to see chipping away at our ability to collectively bargain. So, we've seen issues with wages, we've seen issues with fringe benefits such as healthcare coverage, we've seen issues with things such as workplace safety and conditions, and so, it's long overdue, in my opinion, right, that we've reversed this, and I think we are doing what we can to, to be influential in that way, and I appreciate Councilman Cost for putting this before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Council, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. And I just want to say, I do appreciate what you're doing, colleague Cost. I think it's very important. I grew up in a union household. I proudly wear my union attire everywhere I go. The very first day of session, 2023, Representative Regina Weiss and Senator Darren Camorelli dropped this bill to repeal the right to work, and we are definitely fully supportive. I don't know one union member in the State of Michigan that isn't supportive of this bill. You know, this bill should have been called Right to Work for Less, because it is historically known, all states across the United States that have a right-to-work policy make less money than states that don't. So, very supportive, very proud of my colleague to, to bring this forward, and super proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Other comments? I too just want to thank Councilmember Cost as well as Vice President Garza for the work that they're doing. Councilmember Cost, by bringing this in front of us, is, the city attorney will tell us numerous times we speak through our resolutions, and so, this is our body speaking, and to Vice President Garza, even though it's his daytime job, like Councilmember Hussein's is teaching, he is still advocating for all of us out there in the community, and we appreciate that as well. So, having said that, seeing no other comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Chapter 872, Section 872.01, and repealing Chapter 872, Sections 872.10 through 872.23 to eliminate city licensing, regulating, and operating requirements for records. It's read, it's read a second time by its title, it was reported from the Committee on City Operations, and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Spatafor.
First, I will move what the clerk said, and then explain that this is a series, one in a series of ordinances repealing local requirements that are covered by state law. We did spend some time on this last year, I'm told, in the committee. I'm new on the committee this year, and it was tabled last year over some concerns that were addressed this afternoon in the City Operations Committee related to the Police Department, cleared up with the legal department. So, with that, I would encourage passes of this, this ordinance repealing the licensing requirements for records.
All right, we have the ordinance in front of us. This is a roll call vote.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I'd move for immediate effect.
We have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
And with that, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's any item relative to the operation or governance of the city. That's the yellow form in the back, so we'll give you about another minute to sign up with Griffin if you wish to speak. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move that all items be considered as read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
We have, from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
And the comprehensive financial report.
Committee of a whole.
From the mayor, we have Community Development Block Grant Amendment and the accompanying resolution to set the public hearing.
Committee of a whole.
We have grant acceptance for 54A District Court Specialty Court.
Ways and Means.
We have the appointment of Sandra Lupien to the Economic Development Corporation, Tifa, Brownfield Board of Directors.
Development and planning.
We have the appointment of Nicholas Miller to the Planning Board.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance, U.S. Conference of Mayors Dollar, Dollar Wise Innovation Grants.
Ways and Means.
And the City of Lansing 2022 Annual Report.
Committee of a whole.
We have 13 sole source purchase memos from various departments for various vendors.
Those will all go to Ways and Means. You're very welcome.
And communications and petitions, we have claim appeal for Foxland Holdings for $5,118 in trash at 1714 olds.
City Operations.
Claim appeal for Abdullah Nidai for $2,304 in trash removal fees at 4630 Christensen, and I would note that this person submitted two claims that came to our office on the same day, and we didn't realize there were two different ones, so this one's kind of been sitting for a while.
Okay. City Operations.
And then, item 31, claim appeal for Hamid Kowatsi for $75 in second notice fees, and on this one, I would note that there was some confusion because the person owns multiple properties, and it should be for 1017 Hillsdale instead of 724 Johnson.
1017 Hillsdale, okay. And that will go to City Operations.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move to excuse, excuse Councilwoman Patricia Spitzley.
We have a motion. Are there questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, remarks by council members.
Are there council member remarks? I have, I don't see anyone. I have a couple. First of all, I wanted to let the public know a couple of, of things on our council website under council members. There is now a tab that will show the attendance of council members. It is a spreadsheet that will be updated after every meeting so that you can look to see the attendance of council members. Also, we have reposted our internal auditor position, and that posting went out today, so we are anxiously trying to fill that position. And lastly, we are still working on the streaming of committee meetings. We are still having some problems with the equipment, so it's not something that we've forgotten about. We're working diligently to try to solve that, that issue, and I know that was extremely important to Councilmember Hussein, who tried to get that done before his tenure was up as president, so just wanted to keep the public abreast of those items. Any, seeing no one else?
Okay, remarks by the mayor. Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First, we have Jody Washington, and then Stan Shuck.
Thank you so much, Jody Washington, Lansing. Carol, first, President Wood, I want to thank you so much for granting my request that the council have an ad hoc committee on homelessness. This is a problem that has gotten out of control. The answers have never come. We keep doing the same thing over and over, and the population is growing, and in fact, it's not just our residents, we are now attracting homeless people. So, this is a regional issue, it's not a Lansing issue, and we have to do something different, and I have full confidence that council will look outside of the box. It was mentioned that the Lansing Housing Commission is coming before you for an audit. I would have you know that this past week, I have gotten notice from an apartment manager in this city where some of the people I advocate for live, that they are all receiving eviction notices because Lansing Housing Commission has not paid their fair share of the rent for three months. These are folks that have permanent supportive housing vouchers, and their rent should be paid. It's bad enough we do not give them the supportive services that they are supposed to receive. Apparently, that is a call once a week, and they have them come down and get paper towels and toilet paper. This is not acceptable. Triple J told me one time, in this city, homelessness is a cycle. We go from tent to shelter to apartment to eviction to tent, and the people you, you see on the street are now new homeless people. They have been housed, they have been evicted, and the cycle continues. So, President Wood, I am looking for you to bring in people that are not Advent House, Holy Cross, Lansing Housing. There are so many people that have so many good ideas and are willing to actually help scaffold these individuals into independent living, not just handcuff them into these prisons of poverty that we continue to build with 4% pilots, but to actually help them become sustaining citizens, which is actually what they all want. So, we have to go beyond this, building 5,000 units of low-income housing. We need to do more. We can't be the Mecca, but we can be the hope for those that we have here. So, again, thank you so much. I will be at all of these meetings because people I love are suffering because of the inadequacies of the agencies that we continue to fund with my tax dollars and everybody else's tax dollars. It's got to stop. So, thank you very much. And with that, I will say I'm incredibly optimistic with this day as that I see, and we will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by David Ellis.
Stan Shuck, South Lansing, also known as Route 19, which is south of Mount Hope and east of MLK, Terundle, the old Schaefer's Bakery area. And the chip seal is atrocious. I listened to the response, and I will say that if you came down my, on my block, now it looks pretty good because the neighbors sweep it up. And like I said, in front of my place, I got 15 gallons, 15 gallons of rocks. And this isn't just a contractor, this, this is on the City of Lansing Public Service. When I posted the video on the city site and on Facebook, this was the response, and Andy, I'd like you to listen to this, this was the response from your operator. The road was chip sealed, straight grinder on the leaves, and they didn't have bodies to put someone in a sweeper. I was supposed to finish your route with Terry the next day in the sweeper behind me on days, but instead, they put me in another route. So, it's not just a question of the contractor not doing his due diligence, it's also a question of the Public Service Department not coming back and finishing the job. They're the ones that did this. They pushed all the leaves through the neighborhood, loosened everything up, loosened all that gravel up that wasn't loose, and then they didn't come back and finish the job by their own accord. And now, for them to say, well, you're going to have to wait till spring, that, that, that doesn't work. The amount of gravel that is there is ridiculous. I mean, literally, if I swept my block, it would be pickup trucks full. So, Andy, you know where I'm at. Drive down through there and have a look at it. MLK, it's right down to the ceiling. There's nothing there. You pull off MLK onto Cooper, you're right down to the epoxy. And I'd like to say also something about some things Andy said, that the catch basins are self-filtering, and that just sticks in my mind. I have no idea what that means, as being in the Public Service Department for 34 years. That's a ridiculous statement. And if it filters, where does it filter to? Where is that gravel filtering to? I don't, I don't get that. That was a ridiculous statement. It was blowing smoke. And I would like to also say that as far as the sweeping goes and the catch basin cleaning, you said we don't get to it as often as we'd like to. Well, that's not the question. The question is, do you do it as often as you're paid to? It's done through a fee. As you new council members will find out in budget, the compost fee that collects millions of dollars subsidizes sweeping, leaf pushing, and catch basin cleaning as well. So, where's the money that we're paying if the job isn't being done? 117 bucks a lot, I believe. I got two lots. I want my fee, you know, I expect what I pay for.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Ellis is next, followed by Tyrone Davis.
That's fine. David Ellis, first ward. I am actually going to repeat something I had said months before, but with a story to start it off. This previous Saturday, I was walking to work, as I do five days a week, and while I was crossing right next to Museum Drive, a driver decided not to wait for me in the crosswalk. They blare on their horn at me, I yell at them, hey, I'm in a crosswalk, and so, they decided to follow me for a few blocks yelling obscenities at me out the window. I called the police. He drives off. 20 minutes later, he comes back and swerves at me while I'm on the sidewalk. Two hours and 40 minutes later, the police show up and take my report. I am not blaming the police for this, as there are too many intersections for them to be policing every single one in the city. I am actually, I'm not even blaming that driver in particular, while his actions were definitely too much, because drivers always drive like that in the city. Around the world, in every city, like major city across this country, people have asked, how can we make the roads safer? Can we educate drivers to be better drivers? Can we police the streets to make sure people are being safer? And time and time again, they say, no. Drivers drive the way that feels most comfortable to them for how the road is set up. This is, all this information is gathered together in an idea called Complete Streets, which advocates for safer roads, which design the roads themselves to promote safer driving, safer pedestrian areas, and all that such. In 2009, when I was in fifth grade, Lansing passed the Complete Streets ordinance, advocating for complete streets in Lansing. 13, over 13 years later, this is happening. I am, every single day when I am walking, I promise you, every single day, there is something. There is a driver parked on the crosswalk, there is someone turning right on a red light in front of me, there is people parked on the sidewalk, there, I have been pushed off the road by a pickup truck before while riding my bike. We are 13 years after that, and if I walk around downtown, I would like one person, one person to point out a single significant thing that has actually happened to make it safer. Back when I was, when I was a kid, my parents used to talk about how downtown Lansing was dangerous at night because everything was run down, there's people everywhere. Walking home is when I feel safe because there are no cars. What are we going to do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tyrone Davis, followed by Eric Gaines.
I would like to talk about a situation. 17 years ago, I got in a conflict with my partner, and the prosecutor was determined to make an example of me. with my partner, and the prosecutor was determined to make an example of me. So he said that I was a felon, and for 17 years, I believed it. And I acted accordingly, trying to keep myself clean. I worked for Governor Granholm. I was an honor student. I was ported over to Governor Snyder, was an honor student, got three master's degrees, got out. And I wanted to be like everyone else, normal, have a relationship. So, the problem was, I had the worst housing situation. Every time I applied, I was denied. You are a felon. You can't come here. We don't allow it. So, since I was in, I would call a shack, I decided, I'm working for the governor. I can live. Don't worry about it. Well, this weekend, I decided to swallow my pride, go down to the fair, get rid of the felony. I go down there, I sit for about two hours, several asthma attacks, and I go to the attorneys. They look through the paper. They're like, what are you doing here? I'm like, trying to get rid of this felony. And they're like, you don't have a felony. And I'm like, yes, I do. And they're like, no, you don't. So they send me off and say, hey, go and get yourself out. You have misdemeanor for like domestic violence. What'd you do? I'm like, got in an argument with my ex. And so they're like, well, you never had a felony? Why are you here? And I said, I'm sorry for wasting your time. Walked off. And I'm like, okay. And they're like, go see those people. They're nation outside. I'm like, okay. I walk up to them. They're like, wait, for 17 years, you believed you had a felony? And I'm like, yeah. Like, didn't apply for certain jobs that I got offered, ILM, returned to Pixar, go to work over in Dubai. And I'm like, I've wasted 17 years of my life living in shackles because I thought I had a felony. And I just recently applied for housing, was quickly denied, lost my fiance, and she was like, I can't live here with you. So she left. So I would like the council to take note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Eric Gaines, followed by Mitch Rice.
Hi, my name is Eric Gaines. Speaking on behalf of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and adding our voice to support the group Nation Outside, which I believe you'll hear from a little more, a little bit, in support of the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance. And, you know, we all value safe neighborhoods. And one of the problems preventing safe neighborhoods is housing insecurity, specifically for the formerly incarcerated, which we believe helps contribute to gun violence. A solution that we see for that, one of the solutions, is the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance, which I know many of you have heard about before. Some may not be familiar. It is an ordinance that started with the Ad Hoc Committee on Housing and Resident Safety last year, and is now with the Public Safety Committee. So we're glad to see that it's, you know, still being considered and worked on. It's got four main points, as proposed by Nation Outside. And those points simply are, number one, it prohibits landlords from asking potential tenants about their conviction history during the initial screening process. Number two, postpones any background checks until a conditional lease is offered. Three, prevents landlords from unfairly denying applicants housing based on their criminal history unless that record would impact public safety, property, or other tenants adversely. And number four, allows tenants to offer evidence of rehabilitation prior to final denial by a landlord, testimonials, letters, whatever. What we're asking for, what Moms Demand Action is asking for, as well as Nation Outside, who I also work with, is simply that you give the Fair Chance Housing Ordinance the serious consideration that it deserves. I know it might seem a little bit like it indirectly relates to gun violence, but we think there's a real, there's a real connection there. Housing insecurity, causing job insecurity, making it hard to have a job, you know, people especially formerly incarcerated, not having a stable lifestyle. We can see where that can result in gun violence. So we're just asking that you give it your time and serious consideration. And we thank you for the efforts that you've already done on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening, Lansing City Council and Mayor Shore. On January 3, I was here before the city council addressing this same issue. The right of every Lansing citizen is a safe and affordable place to live. Not every citizen has this, and especially returning citizens. Those who have been previously incarcerated are labeled and stigmatized as not worthy of a fair chance at housing in Lansing. Now is the time to reverse that problem for the city of Lansing. Returning citizens have paid their debt to us and deserve an equal consideration for housing as other citizens. We know that safe and affordable housing gives a returning citizen a chance to make a new life and to be a contributing member of the community. I'm asking this city council to take action to pass a Fair Chance Housing Ordinance that last year's council did not do. In 2022, a draft ordinance was being developed and now needs to be addressed again. It's up to each of you to become familiar with this and to make it a priority of the council this year. I and others will be keeping this need before you and will not give up or go away. So now is the time to step up and take the necessary action to work for returning citizens whose voice has been dismissed too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Robert Sheeran.
A couple of brief things tonight. First, I want to thank Carol for your comment because the first thing on my list was to talk about progress on the hybrid meetings issue and whether, you know, we're starting the budget process again, if that was in the forefront of the budget planning. So I'm happy to hear that that is still being recognized as an important issue. Second, I see there's quite a few, I think it was 12, maybe 13, things coming down the pike for sole source proposals for different products or services. And I don't have a lot of pro or con, one way or the other with that, except to say that I'm very aware that it's easy to write an RFP so that the person you want to get the bid has the only or the better chance of getting it. So I would just hope that you're looking at those RFPs closely to see that they aren't written in such a way that it limits who can respond to them. Third, there was conversation during the first part of the meeting and in the COW meeting about the finances and the financial reports and the fact that the finance department was going to be switching software soon, and their deadlines that they had with the state that they were likely not going to meet. And part of that delay was that they didn't want to invest in one software when they'd have to turn around then and buy another. I see that the software they're talking about buying is one of those sole source amendments in the packet there. And that tells me that it's going to be a month, two months, three months before an approval even goes through for them to buy that, let alone convert to it. So it's really telling me that there's not much way realistically thinking that they're going to meet those deadlines. And then lastly, there was conversation in the conversations with the new prosecutor getting attorney about guns in one form or another. And the comment was made that there could be people who were innocent of knowing what the law was, and therefore they should be treated differently than others. So I just want to read you a quote. "It is a fundamental legal principle in the U.S. that ignorance of the law is no defense. If ignorance were accepted as an excuse, any person charged with a criminal offense could claim ignorance to avoid the consequences. Laws apply to every person within the jurisdiction, whether they are known and understood or not." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Sheeran, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening, everyone. Some of you might have seen me before. My name is Specialist Robert Sheeran, Army veteran. I was incarcerated for 18 and a half years. I've been home for four and a half years now. Excuse me. One of the obstacles that I faced when I came home was housing. I came home suffering from PTSD. I didn't know what that was, you know, until I was diagnosed with it. And I came home and I was married. My wife was staying in this townhouse. And little did we know that I couldn't be on the property because of my felony conviction. So for a year and a half, I had to sneak around the property, avoid management with my two kids because I was a felon. So lo and behold, thank goodness, by me being a veteran, I found out about my VA loan. I had the income and I had the credit. So a year and a half after getting out, I was able to purchase one of my dream homes. My plea to you all is this. I work with a veterans group over at the Lansing Seabike Clinic over on Cedar Street in Javelin. And we have a lot of returning veterans. And they're coming home with mental issues, serious mental issues. And they come home and they do stuff that runs them afoul of the law due to unaddressed PTSD, depression, substance abuse. So a lot of them are in a predicament that I was in at one time where they can't get housing. And they're bitter about that. They're really bitter because they serve their country. They put their life on the line. Heck, some of them had just come home six months ago and untreated, you know, you know, you come home and they, you know, just saw action like two weeks ago, just saw their buddy, you know, their caravan blew up. And now they back out here walking around and they trying to readjust to society. A lot of your road rage cases, a lot of your domestic violence cases, if you look at the data, are veterans. Twenty-three veterans take their life every day. So what I'm appealing to you all is, the Fair Chance Housing is a step in the right direction because at least it gives a person the opportunity. When you check that box off that you're a felon, you know, you pay a $50 fee, your $50 is gone without even being, you know, without even having an interview. I have a friend right now that's a union member, works at General Motors, makes $80,000 a year. He has a felony credit score, and he can't get an apartment. He's in the process of purchasing a home, but just think about the $80,000 credit score, and he can't purchase a home. That makes no sense. Fair chance housing, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Carter Brown.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank the Lansing City Council for unanimously calling on the now Democratic-controlled state legislature to support collective bargaining rights for unions. It's definitely a great step in the right direction, but I still think that we, as the city of Lansing, can do better. As shown by that budget pie chart from Committee of Hope, the budget is far from well-balanced. Neighborhoods is still way underfunded, and our infrastructure is not the best, in the best condition, especially on the South Side. We need to prioritize funding for underfunded departments because everyone deserves the right to quality housing. And increasing funding on neighborhoods and other underfunded departments would do that. And also, we need to put a cap on spending for overfunded departments like Public Safety, which is way overfunded. And I also want the city to vote yes on opening the state charter this year so we can get rid of at-large and increase the number of board council members from four to eight to increase representation from impoverished and marginalized communities. That is all I really need to say right now, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carter Brown, followed by Grace Haley.
Hello. I just wanted to start with saying thank you for addressing the need of the hybrid meeting. I was actually very glad to be able to cross that out of my notes today. And I wanted to bring up the fact that we still need a 24-hour warming shelter. We have so many people here tonight talking about the issues we have with homelessness and the cycle, and it is something that has been brought to your attention. You are aware. You can see it on our streets. And winter, it happens every year. Every year, it gets chilly and cold, and you can't be out there without a coat for very long. And we have outreach programs doing the best they can to try to keep these people safe. You know, the shelters are full. We have people freezing to death. Winter happens every year. There is no reason why a 24-hour warming shelter is not a possibility. It is something we need. It'll save lives. It is essential to our community to keep people safe. That is all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Grace Haley, followed by Mariah LaRolland-Wagner.
Hello, my name is Grace Haley. I'm a retired teacher, sorry, from the Lansing School District. I taught for 43 years, and teaching is my heart. So I have volunteered at Northwest Initiative Arrow as a GED teacher. And every day, I meet returning citizens, male and female, who have a very difficult time adjusting to life in the real world because they have so many have-to-do things on their list, and housing is number one. They may have mom and dad or someone to live with, or they may have a couch that they can slam on for a while, but then that's not permanent. They have to move on. They may live in a shelter for a minute, but those get full awfully quick. I had one student who lived in a tent in the backyard of somebody's house. I had another student who, as an example, who kept getting in trouble and having trouble finding a place to live as being one of the main reasons why he was having difficulty. I also have a son who came home and felt like he had nothing with a whole lot of things he had to consider and do. And he came in and said, Mom, I might as well go back. There's nothing here for me. I was downhearted and sad. And that's one reason why I am an advocate for the young people that I meet every day. Having home to live gives safer streets, in my opinion. It helps with their feeling of self-safety so they don't have to carry guns and get in trouble. It helps with their self-confidence and builds their self-worth. And if they are homeless, they, it just tears them down. They come home wanting to be successful and are feeling knocked down and defeated from the very beginning. So I would encourage you to really look at fair chance housing for returning citizens. I tell my students, they are not felons anymore. They're returning citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mariah LaRolland-Wagner, followed by Rita Dunlop.
Thank you. My name is Mariah LaRolland-Wagner. I am a licensed Realtor, and I own 50 rental properties in the city of Jackson. As a Realtor, we are required to follow fair housing. And as a landlord, my husband and I have chosen to follow fair housing policies prior to the city of Jackson passing it. As a landlord, you want tenants who are respectful. Do they respect your property? Do they respect you as a landlord? Are they respectful to their neighbors and the community? Are they respectful to their neighbors in the community that they live in? A background check doesn't allow me to find that out. We want people who are responsible. Do they fill the application out completely? Do they provide the needed documentations? Do they answer questions and follow the policies and regulations in the lease? A background check doesn't do that. And finally, we want people who are able to pay. Do they have a job? Do they have a reference at work? That is what is important as a landlord. And so fair chance housing acts would allow those criteria, which are most important to us as landlords, not a background check to determine whether I will place someone in my property and whether they'll be a successful tenant for me. As someone who has lived in this world and worked in this policy for a long period of time, we have found it's a very successful indicator if they can meet those three criteria. And we don't do any background checks. We do have a number of tenants that have records. They have disclosed to us in the period of time that they lived with us, but that's not the issue if an issue arises. It's are they respectful? Are they responsible? And do they have a job to pay the bills? As such landlord, I would advocate a fair chance housing policy for the City of Lansing would be successful, just like it has been in Jackson and Ann Arbor and other communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rita Dunlop, followed by John Moran.
Hello, everyone. I'm also a landlord and I agree with everything you said. It's wonderful. And I'm also a supporter of the have the fair housing. Okay, first of all, we have to look at, we have to give the ex-offenders, the parolees, people with a background, a chance at success. If they don't get housing, I don't call them apartments. I call them commando centers. This is where you do everything with your life. This is where you cook, you eat, you have your friends over. This is a commando center. So that's another way to look at the apartments. There's also a benefit I found that when you do accept ex-felons, that you're not just taking them, you're uniting families, people, ex-offenders that haven't seen their kids in a long time, they now have a place to entertain their children, maybe even have them move in with them. And so seeing smiling children, girls and boys, that's a side effect of having fair housing. And the one thing I wanted to say I think would be a very good approach is these people that are having difficulty, they need a caseworker. They're need, when someone has trouble with housing, why are evictions happening? They're happening because they don't have a support person. To be success in housing, if you're very mature, you need two people, the landlord and yourself. But people that have issues need the landlord themselves and they also need case support, somebody that's out there speaking for them and helping them obey the, you know, I don't say obey the lease, go along with the lease and the three things that you mentioned. And I think if we, you know, put more effort in that, we're going to have more success. The, the big thing with everything is why are evictions happening? You know, they're not all monetary. Monetary generally we can get help with, but when it's behavioral things, we've got to have case support. If we don't get case support, then the next step is police. And we don't, you know, we don't need to turn every situation into a police situation if we get the right support at the right time. Let me see if there's anything else. I just want to say, I've had several successes with ex-felons, people on parole. I just want to say I've several successes and I've united some families and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Moran, followed by Rich.
Good evening. I want to welcome my newest subscriber to my YouTube channel. I look forward to telling my lawyer's story. On the mission statement for the City Council, it says, "The City of Lansing mission is to ensure quality of life by promoting a vibrant, safe, healthy, and inclusive community that provides opportunity for personal and economic growth for residents, businesses, and visitors." When I first encountered problems, I tried to contact my city council member in my ward. That was Jody Washington. I called her probably a dozen times, leaving voicemails, never got one response. All I needed was some advice as to how I could deal with what was going on in my unsafe When I failed with her, I tried to contact Carol Wood. I called her, I think, twice and once again, no response. Called them both on their cell phones, left voicemails on them, never got a response. Election time, though, I get mailers from Jody Washington. In it, right off the bat, she's supported by and endorsed by the police officers. I'm happy for her. Everybody wants to be supported by the police. In it, it says, "Jody works for safe neighborhoods." I've never seen that. Carol, same thing. Capillary labor program, Lansing Police Officers. On this one, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 141. I don't blame you. I'd, I'd like to have their endorsements too. In it, you, you wrote, "Make sure your voices are being heard, that your opinions matter, whether it's a neighborhood issue, a public safety matter, or an economic development project." Nobody ever returned calls. But I got the same thing with the mayor's office when Benaro was in office, city police chief, nobody ever returns calls. I used to tell my lawyer when they had a dozen felonies against me and Sherry, that I wasn't worried about anything because the truth will set me free. And it did. It set us free, in my case, more than once. I also told, told people all the time that if no one stands up, we all fall down. I know I'm on my own and I know the city spent a lot of money, tens of thousands of dollars trying to convict me. And if the deposition had happened at the city attorney's office, maybe we would have never had to go through this. All I know is that my lawyer fired his secretary for not notifying me about the cancellation.
Thank you.
Shows his character.
Next is Rich, followed by Rosalyn Williams.
Well, this is my first time here, so I was talking about to some of my fellow nation outside that since I've been out of the penitentiary and stuff, and they denied me so many times, but I was in a recovery house when I got out. And I was there for three years. I got kicked out for a false positive for alcohol. And after that, I got kicked out. I was out for nine, nine months and I just finally got an apartment that would accept me. And that nine months, though, I was looking for apartments. I've been denied all, out through the whole time. And till I found this apartment, all they said that I needed to co-sign. So I went out, I spoke to my sister about it and, you know, my sister was like, yeah, let me sign that. And I got me an apartment. And there's a lot of stuff that goes on over there, but, you know, it's not really bad of attraction where like violence is or anything, but, you know, there's a few things that go around. But I ain't got really much to say, but thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Rosalyn Williams, followed by Tony Gant.
Good evening, Councilwoman Woods, Jeff, all of you. So the common issue today I'm hearing is housing, be it fair housing or not. And unfortunately, as a newly-elected school board member, I stand here and say I live in subpar housing. You know, I work a full-time job. I have businesses that I do maintain. However, when we are up against things as bedbugs, rats, walking outside and you're falling, causing you to be hospitalized for seven to 10 days, and then you reach out to the mayor's office and you get past a buck, past a buck. So fair, fair housing is for everybody. And on top of that, having to be experienced gun violence, yes. As of December 31st, my family became a victim of that, but my neighbors had shot in the window while we were laying home. We are here to help each other and many of you I voted for, I campaigned for, I've spoke to you, I've sent emails as far as back as April of this year to no avail that we are safe, we feel, we feel safe. I literally moved my hair in my house and I jumped because I don't feel safe. It's not, anything can fall down. Your inspections, every furnace in our complex, and I will say, Autumn Ridge, is not up to code. Three years since 2019 and nothing? Everything keeps going down. I started out with five violations in 2019. As of today, my unit alone has seventeen. And because you guys are suing them, we that, the people that live there have to suffer. Our rent is steady going up, but nothing else is getting done. Mayor Shore, I am really, really, really saddened because my teenager, at the time when you first voted, got it, went out and campaigned and was invited to your inaugural, but had the flu. So my child is a reflection of what he believes in. And as I sit and watch, most of you have failed us as people, as individuals, some as friends. What are we going to do to fix this situation? Because again, as money and grants are coming in, we're only recycling it to the same organizations. We're not fixing the need. We're not creating some things that need to be there. Nobody's reached out to my, to my family and said, how can we help you since your son has been shot? And Mayor Shore, yes, you've worked with my son. I'm not going to say his name, but he has things that you were going to be working together with. I am saddened that after all of this time and after all the things that we do and believe in, Lansing is not what it was and not what it should be. Buildings are growing, but we have a lot of families that are suffering. When is the change going to come? You all have to look at each one of yourselves and say, am I doing my part? I'm doing all that I can being a school board member because I'm going in as a parent, not as a politician. What does your family look like? What do the dynamics in your home look like? You should change it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tony Gant and then Karen Schultz.
Mayor Shore, honorable council members. It's great to be before you guys again. I, I can assure you people that I'm going to keep being before you and hold you accountable as elected leaders in the City of Lansing to do the right thing. You've heard from landlords, you've heard from people who actually struggling to get housing and being denied housing simply because they have a criminal record. You guys have the authority to change that. They are people in your city, right here, talking to you. And some of you look as though you could care less, which is, which is a bit problematic, right? Something we'll have to address as, as voters, right? As we build out a voting base to talk about who's concerned about people that live on the margins. Because what we know about people with criminal records is that they're 10 times more likely than the general public to experience homelessness. And so we have people coming up here and talking about the homeless problem in Lansing. And what the data shows is that when you look at homeless population, up to 50% of them have criminal records. And there's a cycle that feeds upon itself. Once you experience homelessness, you're more likely to be arrested for petty crimes and then you end up with another crime, you're incarcerated, you get out again, and now you can't get anywhere to live because we make it legal to discriminate against people because they made a mistake, which is insane, right? Because the mayor just talked about a $10,000 grant that the city is getting to help people get educated when they get out of prison, but not housed. Education is great. I commend it, but we got to get people housing. This is the same city your constituents disvoted last election to say, let's remove felony, the felony bar from people serving on committees, right? Let's remove that. They just voted. They just sent you a signal. Your mayor testified before the legislator and supported clean slate. When would this city council support second chances? When would you all make it a priority to help people get housing? Some of you said last time we were, you ain't know what we were talking about. I didn't know what you guys were talking about. We're talking about fair chance housing, right? We're talking about an opportunity for people with felony conviction to get housed without being discriminated against. There are ordinances in other cities that show you guys a pathway and a blueprint to get it done. The only thing that's stopping you from doing it is you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Karen Schultz next, followed by William Walker.
Hi, I'm Karen Schultz and I retired from the Lansing School District. I have worked in Lansing for many, many years as a volunteer. And today, I'm just speaking for returning citizens, be it people that have been housed in jails for mental illness, the veterans, and so many people that just need a second chance. I'm just going to say it because a lot of other people have said it, please pass a fair chance housing ordinance in 2023. I, I know, I feel it's going to happen. And I want to thank you for caring about those that just want the basic needs. And I know you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have William Walker, followed by Asia Wilson.
It seems that we're hearing the same thing, different voices, different scenarios, but we're still at the same situation. We talk about putting issues in ad hoc committees. We sit back and we sympathize. Maybe, as I offered last time, somebody should sleep outside tonight and then we can empathize. The problem is the people are not awake. This is the capital city. The laws start here. Change, progress starts in this city right behind you. Are we going to lead or are we going to sleep? Lansing is the capital city. We've talked about this over and over, people from everywhere coming from here, landlords coming here. It's time we recognize we have a problem, we must address it. It's not going to go away on its own. We talk about minor things, $10,000 for education. Would you like to sleep on, under a bridge and read your books? Or maybe you can read, they can read under a streetlight. Of course, as they're standing around, isn't that vagrancy? It's time that we take this bull by the horns. That is what you're here for. You're here to address the problems that face this city. You are the city council. It's time to start addressing this. The mere fact that we put it into a committee. When I was in college, we looked negative at ad hoc committees because the things were not getting done in ad hoc committees. Now, many, many decades later, nothing's getting done. Are we going to stay in committee or are we going to start taking some action? This is the issue. Are we going to stay in committee or start taking action? I'm going to be here over and over and over. I come before an intelligent forum. Everybody realizes. You walk the streets, you see the homeless, or are you just ignoring them? Again, I offer you the chance to spend four days in these streets. I have seen people sleeping under the underpasses. Matter of fact, the one over off of Pennsylvania in, I can't think of the street.
Thank you.
Oh, Martin Luther King. Good day.
Thank you. We have Asia Wilson, followed by Nicole Austin.
Hi, my name is Asia Wilson.
Hi, my name is Asia Wilson. I'm a mother. I'm also a published author, an advocate, a mentor, I'm a counselor, and I'm so much more. I own multiple businesses, currently still launching projects. I personally have worked extremely hard, not to only change my life, but now I've worked even harder to change the life of others, to dismantle and disconnect the generational curses of incarceration and dead ends. I don't understand why we must continue to be locked and linked in with our past. Housing security is the key to building stability and reconnecting with the community. People need an immediate housing plan in place. Without this, people will reoffend and be housed by any means necessary. The average formerly incarcerated individual is often restricted to pretty much everything. With these type of barriers in place, this makes it nearly impossible for people to integrate back into society. If we're able to select a place in which we can migrate to after incarceration, this will be open doors for easier adaptability and rehabilitation. This will give us a chance to feel empowered with a sense of belonging and responsibility to not only establish endeavors, but also maintain endeavors. This will be conducive to a healthy lifestyle, not only for us, but those around us. This will establish us, this will help us to establish a chance, not only that the time that we spent behind bars didn't go to waste, but also that we've, you know, made changes and we're serious about establishing a life. The formerly incarcerated also have children and families that we want to get things established for too. And that's pretty hard if we don't have a house or housing to do such things. We really want to set a standard, like me personally, I want to set a standard for my son. He paid for my mistakes and now I'm trying to change that, change his outlook. And it's really hard if I got, you know, a bunch of barriers stopping me and holding me back with housing. Often times, like someone else said, housing is a place where you come like unwind and, you know, dismantle everything that you carry throughout the day and throughout life. Without housing, how do we have a place to let all that go? Policymakers should prioritize housing security and resources for returning citizens. This ensures the decrease of recidivism. This gives people a sense of belonging. If someone is not feeling as if they belong, they won't act as such. We are only all as safe as those members of our community that are at, that, I'm sorry, that are most at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Nicole Austin.
Sorry, y'all, I'm a little bit nervous.
That's okay.
I'm formerly incarcerated 18 years. I've been out since 2020. I'm here for Nation Outside and Fair Chance Housing. I have been out and have had to sleep on couches, sisters' couches, friends' couches. It's even very hard for me to find a job. I have one, I work at Peckham, finally, because they hired me. But so many times, they go by your felony conviction, whether you're innocent or guilty, and I happen to be innocent, but it doesn't matter, it's on paper. So since it's on paper, I get judged for it for the rest of my life. I can't find housing. I can't do nothing. And it's very sad that, and it's not just Lansing, it's all over the state of Michigan. Because when I got out, I paroled to Saginaw to my brothers, nothing there. Why? Because you have a felony conviction, whether it's murder, such as what I have, whether it's a petty felony, you're judged for that for the rest of your life and you can't live and you have to be homeless. You can't have your kids come over your house because you don't live nowhere because the people you live with might say, I'm sorry, your people can't come over here. And it's terrible. It's very terrible. And I cry about it every single day, cry myself to sleep because our people don't want to stand up and help us. And it's sad. And I wish that you would pass Fair Chance Housing and whatever, if they put any bills out there for jobs. I tried to get a job at a factory where my partner works at. I'm sorry, you can't work here because of your felony conviction. I said at a factory? When I was in prison, I was a plumber and an electrician for 16 years, also a POA, which stands for prisoner observation aid, and sat on a suicidal and made sure they was all right and still couldn't get a job as a plumber, as an electrician because of my felony conviction. And something needs to be done about this because it is absolutely, positively absurd. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Before we adjourn, Jane, if you would please connect with Rosalyn Williams. Each of us have received emails from her. We have turned them over to code compliance, we've turned them over to HRCS. And there's just something that we have to be able to work with. So she's in the back and waving her hand at her. So if you would connect with her, we would appreciate it. Did you want to say something, Mayor Shore?
In reference to Autumn Ridge, I mean, I think we're all extremely familiar with the situation. We have been extremely frustrated with them. We've sent code compliance out numerous times, we've cited them, they've sued us. Our legal team has been in court with them for a while. We're taking every action we can on Autumn Ridge. And I think folks here know that, I would hope that the residents there know that. We've been telling them quite a bit. And we will continue to go after that property to get them to be in compliance. But their lawsuit against us actually prevented us from taking further compliance action. I'm sure Jim can have some folks discuss that in the future if you want, once the lawsuit is done.
I'm well aware of that, Mayor Shore. But I think the thing is, is we have people that are living in substandard housing. Part of our goal is, you know, are we working with different agencies that we might be able to place them someplace else? We've had this discussion about, you know, helping a tenant understand that they can put their rent in escrow so that they have something to be able to move. So I think, you know, again, she's been very diligent about sending pictures and showing us what those issues are, so.
And our staff has been doing that. Our staff has been, our HRCS staff has been very diligent in doing that. We can certainly connect again, but I know that any resident who has brought this to us, we have connected with our HRCS staff for all of those options. We have legal aid for, to assist with escrow. We've got a whole variety of options. So we're happy to continue to connect residents, but we're doing that with every resident that we talk to.
All right, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.